Good evening, everyone. Great to see a packed house tonight. We've got some good, happy news that we're going to be sharing in general this evening. And again, welcome to everybody and glad to see you all here. So first off, I would like to call the meeting of the Saco City Council to order Monday, February 5th, 2024 at 6:30. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions? Okay, and I would like to make note that we do have all councilors present this evening, including city administrator John Behanko. So first item tonight on the general, we do have a, we would like to recognize the passing of the Carmel Town Manager Kevin Howell. Would you please stand silently for a moment? As we pay a reflection and respect to Carmel Town Manager Kevin Howell, who tragically lost his life on Friday, January 26, 2024, while saving his four-year-old son from drowning in Etna Pond. In 2020, Kevin was awarded the annual leadership award by the Main Town, City, and County Managers Association, and in 2018 received the EcoMain, Eco Excellence Community Leadership Award. Kevin's sense of community shines from his accomplishment, and he will be greatly missed. Our thoughts are with Kevin's family at this difficult time, and would you please join me in a moment of silence to reflect on the loss of his life? Thank you. Appreciate that. Be seated. Okay, second item tonight on the general, we do have the recognition of Thornton Academy varsity football team on their state championship win. On November 18th, 2023, Thornton Academy varsity football team won the Class A Maine State Championship, their sixth championship since 2012, by winning over Portland 24-14. The team finished with a record eight and four for the season. The team was led by head coach Kevin Kiesel and consisted of captains Brady Kiesel, Senior, Captain Harry Bounce, Senior, Captain Dominic Champagne, Senior, and Captain Sam Nelson, Senior. Seniors also included Danny Maynard, Alexander Cantara, Connor Shea, Cahill Jones, Landon LeBrecq, Hunter Boudreau, Shiloh Teo, Carlo Cassini, Brayden Samuels, John Edgerly, Liam Higer, JP Baez. And the remainder of the team was Wyatt Benoit, Ryan Camery, Sam Rondo, Jackson Parity, Henry Kingston, Dominic Hudson, Carter Lucia, Noah Fullerton, Rashine Dotson, Stephen Jones, Marcio Sunderland, Luke Valdella, Alan Sanromon, Abe Huff, Logan Olet, Zach Nelson, Trent Wilson, Connor Rayub, Jackson Howard, Tyler Brown, Bryce Ray, Tyler Seer, Carter Cormier, Kobe Emery, Colin Thompson, Matthew Fosher, Gilahaim Carvello, Blaine Sicard, Henry Mahoney, Angustino Nombre, Curtis Nathan, Jason Malouf, Ben Miller, Johannes Harvin Pa, Brecken Golden, Jacob Pelton, Blake DiDonato, Jacob Fish, Broden Shaw, Sam Leary, Tyler Ackerman, Alexander Berry, Ryan Chapman, Ben Knox, Colin Jakamitz, Will Edborg, Grady Hershey, Evan Hill, Aiden Tran, Fernando Angai, Ben Sawyer, Alberto Cavaberas, and Toro Ishashika. I apologize if I pronounced any of those wrong, but... I, along with the members of the city council, would like to congratulate these players for their hard work and dedication to the sport. The community is proud of you. And on an additional note, I would like to state that when I was a sophomore in high school, the team took home the gold ball in an undefeated season in 1986, the first championship in 24 years under Coach Dick Agresti. We were then champions again in 1988, my senior year, by an unfortunate loss to an almost undefeated season by a score of 19 to 14 against Biddeford at the Battle of the Bridge game, which unfortunately I always remember the two-point conversion, that kind of, that's a memory that will always stick with us. It was another 24 years until our next gold ball in 2012 under current coach Kiesel. There have now been six in the past 12 years. Everyone has a story when it comes to TA football, their memories and what they've shared. Guys, this is your story. Cherish it, remember it, and remember to tell it. So I'd like to welcome the team up. We are going to take a group photo. Councilors, if you guys want to join in. Okay, next on the agenda, I would like to invite Jean Saunders from Saco Age Friendly to the podium, and she does have a presentation to council.
Thank you. I won't take a lot of time. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. Tonight, we're closing the circle of when Mayor Micho issued a mayoral proclamation back on June 6th of 2016, declaring the city's intention of becoming an age-friendly community. We're here tonight to present the city of Saco the certificate of completion that the city is a member in good standing in the network of age-friendly states and communities. It states that the city has successfully completed a cycle of improvement and is recognized for its age-friendly leadership, achievements, and continuing commitment toward being a livable community for all. The age-friendly cities and communities initiatives was started in 2007 by the World Health Organization to help ensure older adults have access to food, household help, social interaction, transportation, inclusion, and respect according to the National Institutes of Health. The state of Maine became an age-friendly state in 2019. Saco is one of 80 such communities across the state. Since starting our work in 2016, we have conducted a community survey, and we use the survey responses to create an action plan. The report you have in front of you right now is the progress report we submitting detailing our work and completing our action plan. The work of Age Friendly Saco continues with our army of dedicated volunteers. You can see many of them here tonight with us. We'd like to just share a few of the statistics that we shared with our volunteers at our volunteer recognition event in November. To address housing, Age Friendly Saco continues with a program we started in 2019 called Handy Helpers that provides small home modifications and repairs to help our neighbors stay in their homes more safely as they age. Our volunteers have provided 331 home repairs and modifications and donated 563 hours of their time. We also worked with the city's planning department to help create an ADU booklet to help residents better understand the new ADU ordinance and help create a how-to guide. We are currently in the process of working with Nestlely. Since 2018, Age Friendly Saco has sought to create a home share program to create additional housing opportunities in our community. This has come to fruition through a statewide contract with Nestlely. Nestlely is an award-winning social enterprise whose mission is to build intergenerational connections while increasing access to affordable housing. Nestlely leverages technology and an incredible support team to make it safe and easy for our age-50 and older households to share an extra room with a young person seeking a place to live for longer than a month. Maine has over 100,000 cost-burdened senior households. We hope that Nestlely can be an answer for some of these households. Age Friendly Saco is fortunate to be part of a statewide steering committee working to operationalize Nestlely in our state. To address food, we have been delivering USDA food boxes since 2019. In this time, we've delivered 1,751 boxes of food. In addition to this, over 900 Valentine's Day meals, which have been provided with our partner Ferry Beach Retreat in Conference Center, which we started ever since the pandemic. Our community meals program, which were able to start with the assistance of an ARPA grant, are being held monthly at the Saco Elks Club, and so far, we have served 553 meals since starting the program this past June. Our volunteer medical rides transportation program, our coordinator is sitting in the back, has provided 1,593 rides for 128 of our residents. We are fortunate, very fortunate, to have 14 volunteer drivers that our residents. We are fortunate, very fortunate, to have 14 volunteer drivers that have traveled 14,160 miles to provide these services. Our new on-demand shared ride service, we also have our coordinator here for that service as well, David is also a driver, that started this past October. We've already provided 103 rides to local grocery stores, the Cowan Center, community center, library, banks, pharmacies, just to name a few places. We also seek to be inclusive and provide social interaction opportunities through our various annual events, including our dinner dances, our wellness fair, coffee and conversations, and our new adaptive bike program, the chat. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight, and we look forward to our efforts to make Saco truly a community of a lifetime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for joining us for all of that. Some good happy items this evening. Thank you, Andrew, for getting everything set up. We appreciate it. Okay, so next on the agenda, we are number five, committee correspondence to council. Is there any committee correspondence? Okay, not seeing any. Next item, item six, public comment. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
I'm David Plaven. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road in Saco. I'm also the vice president of Sebar Shore Saco Bay and the chairman of the Shoreline Commission. I just wanted to recognize the fact that the city reached a major milestone with the Army Corps of Engineers when we signed, formally signed, the project partnership agreement, and the magnitude of that can't be understated. I mean, it's only taken God knows how long, depending on what calendar you're looking at, but it's been 17 years since the $26.9 million was approved back in 2007. So it's been a while, but it's welcome. We need it, and we also need to understand that while it's a major milestone, it's not the resolution, and the road ahead is still long, probably arduous. It's going to be, it's still unknown, too. As the Army Corps representative that was here offered very little in terms of what the next step was going to be, saying that they had to review contracts and determine how much money they had, and they should all know that they have $45 million from the 2022 Order Act, and the fact that the project manager wasn't here is also a little bit concerning. So there will be some pressure put on federal reps, state legislators in Saco Bay. All of them are going to send a letter to King Collins and Pingree, letting them know that they're not satisfied with the path that the Army Corps has gone down. SOS will probably follow up with similar letters, and I think we need to really press upon the Army Corps of Engineers that they need to get us a plan, a realistic plan, an expedient plan, and now that we're co-part, now that we're partners, the city does have some sway, and they can actually try to make things happen, and God forbid, I hope you do, because I don't really trust them, and that we should know what the next step is, and we can dictate that perhaps, but regardless, we want transparency. We want to see them here. We want to see them here soon. We don't want to wait another 17 years for whatever they're going to do. So thank you to the mayor, the city administrator, Council Berman, the entire council. I mean, you've been incredibly supportive of this. I know it's, you know, it's not easy. It's not going to probably get any easier, but at least we've made it this far, so let's keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Devin Lewis. I live at 40 Wildwood Drive in Saco, and I'm just here today to voice my concern over an incident that happened at CK Burns last week. I spoke with Tricia Hewitt. She was nice enough to return my email by phone call, and my child had come home that day, and she had mentioned that a child had mentioned a gun in school and threatened another girl, and so on and so forth. Turns out, lots of boys in her class were talking about it, and the child had been removed from his class. I subsequently sent out a lot of emails and tried to get a hold of, I spoke with the vice superintendent, the vice principal, the school safety officer. There was mention of a gun in school. They did an investigation, and then they deemed that he didn't, the child didn't have access to any guns. However, there's been 394 school shootings since Columbine, just school shootings, not even mass shootings. Okay, so if they thought that everyone didn't have access to a gun during those school shootings, there wouldn't be any school shootings if their assumptions were correct. The other part that was really concerning is that a lot of parents found out through their children because they said that this child didn't have access to a weapon, so it wasn't a threat, so they didn't have to report it by their reporting standards. So now, myself and other parents are extremely concerned and don't know what's going on. I believe that the school policy on reporting, even a mention, a rumor, or a joke about a gun, needs to be seriously rethought. People think there's no risk, and that's why school shootings happen. The superintendents and the staff at CK Burns was not able to explain to me the safety measures that they would take. They did tell me that, yeah, he had, the child had mentioned having a gun. So this is, I can't tell you how worried and scared I was at the time. We just had a shooting in Lewiston. I feel it's not being taken seriously enough, assessing that the threat isn't really that great, and then not reporting it to the parents is even a further misstep, and that this whole entire policy and the staff's actions need to be reconsidered. The school safety officer assured me that the child has been removed and is being monitored, and in a special program now that will follow him until he's out of school. So if the rumor wasn't that serious, I don't know why these measures would have had to be taken. They couldn't tell me much more than that because of child's privacy, and I do understand that, but I believe we should protect the other children in the school more than we should protect the person that could be a perpetrator. We have to consider them, too. So thank you for your time tonight, and I hope this gets considered.
Thank you, Devin. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Upon, oops, sorry, upon review of the last council video, I am encouraged by the transparency and speed of Saco's form of government, a mayor, a council, and administrator collaborating together towards better governance. In less than two months, 28 appointments, including consent tonight, a joint planning board and school sessions, appointment of award VI counselor, one zoning petition and one zoning map amendment request, addressing long overdue housekeeping ordinance amendments, 179, 188, 230, and a critical planning department compliance position, as of is being considered with open and frank transparency dialogue. Bravo. Thank you. Bravo to the mayor's appointment comment, which is new. Resumes and applications in the pack for the council to be duly informed prior to their decision. May I also suggest including reappointments, their updated current application and/or resume for the benefit of new counselors and members of the public. Bravo for executive session agenda details, not only providing the state statute, but adding more details as followed. Example, negotiations of a cell tower lease. Thank you. I'm pleased that Councilor Gunn addressed the pilot program of Friday afternoon's off and its meeting access here at City Hall, and Councilor Archer's suggestion of partnering with Dior Library on Saturday mornings. Please consider moving the 4:00 PM council agenda ahead, so counselors and the public can obtain any information needed before Monday night. We will be losing that Friday afternoon, and I do use codes, and the planning department, and others. Please be ever so mindful that the 2018 ZORs was tasked to reduce the number of zoning districts and contract zone amendments. Taxpayers have paid over six figures and thousands of hours. The city has stated to all the ZORs, the ordinance have been updated in piecemeal fashion over time and become fragmented, inconsistent, and challenging to read and interpret. Most of the proposed revisions are organizational and structural in nature rather than substantive in nature. The proposed document is nearly half the length of the current ordinances, and they are much more logical and digestible to read. It also states that with active contract zones, about 50 and 50 now, we need to find opportunities to dissolve some of these districts where possible based on the revised standards. Please be mindful when you're considering zoning petitions and zoning map amendments. I would like you to consider the four-year Biddeford online tracking that they've been doing since February 2016. It posts all requests and city responses, so all members of the public will benefit from any requests. It saves the city in public costs and time with all four years for transparency. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else seeking recognition? Okay, not seeing anyone. That now moves us on to item seven, the approval of the minutes. There are no minutes to approve. Item eight, consent items. Item A is council schedule for March, April, and May of 2024. Item B, waiver of fees for the WRRD. Item C, confirm mayor's reappointment to the Coastal Waters Commission of James Henderson. Item D, confirm the mayor's appointment to the Conservation Commission, Madeline Clark. Item E, confirm mayor's appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, Philip Grine and Bonnie Newman. And item F, confirm mayor's appointment to the planning board, James Moyer. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. Any items for discussion or to be moved? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Item E, I'll leave it up to council if they want to remove it, but I would just like to state that I'm very familiar with Mr. Grine. First, I'd say I think he's highly qualified for the position, but beyond that, he's a lifelong family friend. He's also a business partner of mine and a current commercial tenant, so I just, in interest of transparency, want to get that out there. If you all are okay with me voting on it, I'll go ahead and vote on it. Otherwise, we can remove it and I'll abstain.
Is council okay with leaving it in the consent, or would you like it moved to action?
No need to abstain.
I'm sorry?
No need to abstain.
Okay.
No conflict.
Any other items? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes for consent items, 7-0. Item number nine this evening, action items. Item A is a second and final reading, budget amendment number three, full-time compliance position in the planning department, and that is assigned to Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. The planning department has demonstrated the need for a full-time position to monitor compliance with contract zone agreements, site plan reviews, subdivision reviews, and other such planning approvals. This amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget proposes funding that headcount through TIF funds, cost recovery funds, and use of fund balance as noted in the attached budget amendment request form. Be it ordered that the city council approves the second final reading of budget amendment number three, fiscal year 2024, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I would trust, you know, staff's input on this. I think for the better of 10 years, I've really kind of harped on the need for a staff member to hone in on compliance or follow up. So with that respect, I certainly respect the request and will support the request. I will say, as I've stated privately to you all, that I do remain a bit concerned about the continued addition of staffing throughout city government, not just this department, throughout all departments. Again, if I, and again, not to pick on this particular department, but if I go back 10 years ago, it was a single department with only three staff members. It's now, when we separate them out, became planning and economic development, and each department, you know, in total now will be with this addition at six. Perhaps they're all needed. I'm not really going to argue against that. I just want to publicly state that as we move forward into this budget cycle, future budget cycles, I remain concerned about additions of staff. Not that, I guess, more where we put them, really, is what I'm concerned with. So again, we have a new administrator. I'm hopeful that we'll kind of, you know, reevaluate how the organization is laid out and put these resources where they're most needed. Again, several years ago, we added an assistant planner, and at that time, the intent was compliance, or at least a portion of that role was compliance, and here we are adding another assistant planner. So again, I just wanted to say that, and I wholeheartedly support it, and I'm hopeful that we start taking care of many of these outstanding issues that are somewhat in planning and somewhat in codes. Thank you.
Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I'm going to agree with Councilor Johnston's sentiments in the sense that I don't want my affirmative vote this evening to be an indication that we're opening the floodgates for additional staffing, but I'm a big supporter of this particular position. I think when we look at land use in the city, as I have closely over the last five to six years, even before I joined the council, the complexities of land use and the demands and pressures on our community for growth in housing and the unfunded mandates issued, recently issued by the state through LD 2003, is just putting a lot of pressure on the planning process here in the city, and I think that this particular position gives us a level of depth and breadth of bandwidth to continue to try to handle that pressure. So I did want to, even though I'm going to vote affirmatively, I do want to agree with Councilor Johnston that we do need to be careful coming into this budget season, but I do trust that City Administrator Bohanko has his arms around that well, and I just want to make sure that my message is clear. Thank you.
Councilor Berman. Councilor Berman.
I suppose just related to that, I want to echo some of what Councilor Hatch just said. I think we've seen a huge growth of complexity in land use and planning. We're also going to see a huge growth in complexity of transit with homelessness, with economic development. As our community grows, so too does the complexity of running our municipal government in our city. And sometimes, in order to meet that increased complexity and challenge, I understand we do need to increase staffing. So while certainly all eyes are on the budget, we have an inflationary period, many of our taxpayers are struggling to pay our current taxes, and we need to have, you know, an eye of a hawk on that bottom line. I applaud the city's efforts to meet the needs, to increase services, and to rise to meet the complexity of the moment. So I certainly support this position and appreciate the need for balance, but I think when the time comes to increase staffing, I think we need to consider supporting it very carefully.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, next item up. Item B is a budget update fiscal year 24, quarter two. And Director Salas?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. All right, so the city of Saco ended the second quarter of fiscal year 2024 in a strong position. Assigned fund balance was $14,599,000, or 20.9% of the city's adopted budget. That's an unaudited estimate, as we are still waiting final notes on our 2023 audit from our auditing firm. On the expense side, expenses were $1 million available versus forecast. City clerk code enforcement, county tax, fire, ambulance, insurance, public work, school budget, solicitor, supported entities, and TIF transfers were all on target because they were within 5% of the year-to-date budget forecast. As for the other departments, I'll go through those and kind of explain where we're at. The assessing department had 56.82% of funds available versus forecast. This is related to the measure and list portion of the revaluation. We did have bids that came in higher than estimated, and so we're reviewing what our next steps will be in relation to that effort. Capital projects, 5.33% available versus forecast. The financing for several large pieces of equipment included interest for year one in error. Usually, we do payments in advance rather than arrears, and so we do not incur interest. So we're going to have a little bit of savings there, about $40,000 versus the appropriated budget. The forecast for bond interest is a little aggressive in the first half, but the total amount equals the city's bonded interest obligations for the year. So that's what's going on with capital. City administration, 11.73% versus forecast, available versus forecast. The department has had some savings on the personnel side due to the change in city administrators and that position being open during the summer. Operational expenses are also a little light as our new city administrator gets up to speed. Communications, 8.73% available versus forecast. Printing, software, equipment, and training, just a little bit light year-to-date. Contingency, here we're overspent versus forecast by 9.89%. Tax abatements were only budgeted for $100,000, but totaled $263,400 year-to-date. We did build some additional overlay into the tax assessors form for fiscal year 2024, but even factoring in those additional funds, the city is likely to run a deficit of at least $10,000 on abatements in fiscal year 24. Council has 27.99% of funds available versus forecast. The big one here would be a Zoom license for hybrid meetings. We haven't yet incurred any expenses related to that. Finance has 5.57% available versus forecast. The city's payroll, software paychecks is budgeted at the start of the year, but expenses are incurred throughout the year, so that will catch up over the next couple of months. Fringe benefits, 7% available versus forecast. The city did budget for a 10% increase in health insurance premiums for calendar year 2024, but the actual increase was closer to 3%. So we're going to have a little bit of savings there. Premium payments will be lower than forecasted through the end of the year. Human resources, 15.47% available versus forecast. The department has had some light staffing in the first half of the year. Contracted coverage was funded through payroll contingency. On the operations side, our training funds are still light year-to-date, but there are plans to spend the funds through the rest of the year, and city staff is being put through training programs. Information technology has 6.89% available versus forecast. The server license fees is the biggest part of that that has not yet been paid. Parks and Recreation, 8% over forecast. Operating expenses are tracking ahead of forecast. The most significant excess costs are program supplies, vehicle equipment repairs, cheering uniforms, buildings repairs, and maintenance and contracted services. We have gotten feedback from Director Summer that he anticipates fees will more than cover this overage should the department be overspent through the end of the year. Planning, 23.02% available versus forecast. Less overtime has been used to date than anticipated, and we do have some contracted funds for several projects. They are unspent, but they are designated for specific studies through the rest of the year. Police Department, 9.41% available versus forecast. Openings in the police department have resulted in net payroll savings of $200,000 through December. Equipment and repair costs also running a little bit light year-to-date. Are there any questions on expenses?
Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. So I think it was under assessing, yeah. Stated that the revaluation had come in higher. Can you just refamiliarize me with what we anticipated? I thought it was around $400,000 that prior councils had set aside for it?
Yes, Councilor May.
Yes.
Yeah, it was, the amount of money was supposed to be spread over two years. Last year, it was $250,000 that was set aside in the budget. The, so in any event, we would have had to have a second amount of money put in, given the lack of bids that we received. It's not just here in Saco or in Maine, it's throughout New England, and there are very few firms that do these measure and lists. And so I'm working with the finance department, the assessor, and I'm going to come back to the city council at the next regular city council meeting to explain what the situation is and tell you what we may need to fund to bring this measuring list forward.
Sounds expensive.
I just want to make it clear that the measurement list will not affect, I repeat this, will not affect the fiscal year 25 budget, which we're going to be working on. The tax list of April 1st, 2024 is for the fiscal year 2025. The tax list of April 1st, 2025, fiscal year 26, will be the one that we anticipate to do the measurement list. Since we've already done a statistical rebound, what we anticipate with the measurement list is to pick up things that happened in the past throughout the years that we haven't done a measurement list. It isn't to do overall, it will look at all properties, but since we've had a statistical rebound, this will be one that will look at all properties, but it won't affect this next fiscal year. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that. I will come back, like I said, at the next regular meeting with the assessor, with finance, and we'll explain to how we want to go forward. At that point, we'll be in the hands of council to make that decision.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, I can certainly wait until next meeting. I just, for informational purposes, my recollection is that prior councils on two separate occasions had set aside, I thought it was $200,000, it sounds like it was $250,000 each time. It was several years in a row. Now, maybe that, those funds fell back, I don't know. I'm just, in my mind, I'm tracking at $500,000 that we set aside previously, so I'm just...
I wish it was, but how preferred would you rate?
Yes, so my memory from having researched this question previously is that funds were set aside in the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 budget cycles for a total of $500,000. And then in 2023, the guidance from the assessing department was that it was still too early in the post-COVID real estate adjustment period to do a revaluation, and so those funds lapsed because nothing was budgeted in 2023. Then for 2024, we started over with the $250,000, sort of hoping maybe that would cover, since we did the statistical update in-house, that might be sufficient, but as City Administrator Bohanko said, the market is very tight. There's a lot of demand for these services because everywhere in New England, and indeed many parts of the country, are experiencing what Saco's experienced in terms of rapid real estate growth. And so the amount that was set aside for '24 is short.
And I think I might add that that $200,000 that lapsed put into corporate surplus, which then ended on balance.
Right, understood.
I just want to make sure that you understood.
But are we just a ballpark figure, closer to that original 500? Okay, so it really hasn't changed in my mind, then.
It hasn't really. I think you...
Could I make a point of order?
Yep.
Your microphone? Yeah, just, we got new people on the, they is here.
I'm sorry, I...
It's okay, I think people got, I got the message, but I just wanted to make sure the public gets it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, John.
Councilor Berman.
Yeah, I guess, just to follow up on Councilor Johnston, and then a separate question. We've been waiting for the measuring list for just some years, so we can wait for one more meeting, of course. I do want to make sure it stays a priority. I think it's years overdue. Second, the Zoom license for hybrid meeting, the council underspent. I know this was, this was a goal, a significant goal of council over the last couple of years to make meetings more hybrid-friendly. Do we have an update on when the Zoom system may be up and running and when that can be expended?
Your Honor, may I?
Please.
Counselor, that's better. Counselor, I did work with the communications department to follow up on that inquiry. The communications department has indicated that we're all set to go, but one thing the council has to understand is that we, the city council needs to update its policy because under state law, we have to comply with certain things. So you can't just go ahead with your existing policy. You need to go through and adopt a new policy that will comply with state law under the FOAA. So we're ready to go, and again, I was going to talk to the mayor about when she wanted to put this on the agenda, but we will give you all the details as to what you have to do to comply with the law, because there is requirements under the state statutes.
Thank you.
Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just to dovetail on the Zoom, I, maybe you folks have as well, I've read a few articles about other municipalities trying to integrate Zoom access into their council meetings, and there's still some challenges with the technology and the ability of folks to enter into the meeting inappropriately with inappropriate commentary. So although I'm eager to bring that technology to this auditorium, I do think we need to be careful, and I'll trust that our techie people can try to figure that out. One other thing I just wanted to comment on, I had comments on the other things that my fellow counselors have brought up, so I won't repeat, but I think from, this has been a concern of mine for, it's been growing over the last few years as we look at the struggles we have to staff our public safety positions within our police and fire departments, and it continues to be a real struggle. And, you know, we talk about the budget, and I don't want to call it a benefit, but the budget is benefited by many openings, particularly in the police department. Here's my concern, is that as we have pressure on us to expand housing options, which I understand is important, we also have to remember that along with increased housing and population comes public safety concerns. And if we cannot staff our police department to a level that is commensurate with our current population, expanding that population without coming up with some attempt to resolve this issue of not being able to fill these positions becomes problematic, at least in my mind. Now, that should not prevent us from encouraging residential growth, but I do think that we need to find ways in which we can increase our opportunities to hire by perhaps building in, and we've talked about this, we haven't done anything tangible about it, but to include some attention to workforce housing as a potential add-on to attract not only public safety personnel, but also I think we can carry that same notion into our school system as well. So although I appreciate the facts, you know, the facts, the budget's not being met, those positions are funded, we can't fill them, and I do want to just get that concern out on the table as we move forward.
Mace, speak, Your Honor.
Please.
I'm happy to report that today, two new police officers started, but it's with a lot of training. It's with other things that go along with that. It's a, you know, a long horizon to get them on the street by themselves, but that is a positive as we go forward. I met the two of them today, and we're excited that that happened. I agree with you, there are multiple ways that we can look at trying to attract public safety employees. Many communities are doing a lot. Unfortunately, sometimes what we're doing is we're chasing each other. So we're working, and I know that the fire chief is working. For example, I think we will be looking outside just the immediate area, but again, that comes with other types of things, relocation, costs, those types of things that need to be addressed. And I've been talking with human resources, we've had some long discussions about that. Certainly, it is at the top of our mind to make sure things are moving forward. And again, like I said, I'm pleased to say we have two new police officer employees, but are coming on through training.
Thank you. Any other questions on the expenses?
Oh, I just...
Councilor Johnston?
An overall comment, well, again, to dovetail, piggyback on prior counselors, I'm very supportive of getting the hybrid model going, but obviously in a responsible manner. Then just a point, or, yeah, I guess my point to council, I think it's rather telling when you look at the almost tripling under contingency for abatements, that's a direct, I've never seen it in 10 years. That's, in my opinion, a direct impact or a direct result of how impactful the tax increase was, because now all of a sudden, and I know these people, because when they came to me with questions, I said, "Well, did you look at your tax card?" And all of a sudden, for the first year, you know, for the first time in 15, 20 years, like, well, that's not actually in existence, so I sent them to do abatements. So, I mean, again, you get a big bill, all of a sudden, you start to scrutinize your tax card. So I think that's concerning to me, but it is what it is at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Director Salas?
Thank you. Okay, so pivoting over to revenues. Revenues were 1.8 million or 5.33% above forecast. This was largely driven by state assistance, motor vehicle excise taxes, and property taxes. Property taxes will exceed budget because of additional funds raised to cover TIF transfer costs. Fire, ambulance, parks, and rec, and property taxes were all on target because they were within 5% of forecast. Building rentals, 17.25% behind forecast, so we do have additional rental income coming through with the new agreement with B-Soup Transit. That was forecasted upon adoption of the lease agreement in October, but will be received throughout the year, so this is really just a timing issue. B-Soup is paying monthly on the higher lease amount, and we anticipate rentals will come in at budget for the year. City clerk fees, 57... City clerk fees, 57.73% behind forecast. The city has not yet received any reimbursement from the state for general assistance expenditures. We have been in touch with the city clerk, and our general assistance director was working with the state on some corrections for the second half of fiscal year 2023, and we have now submitted for those reimbursements to the state for the first half of 2024 and should be receiving them shortly. Code enforcement fees, we've received $773,067 to date, so the department has already exceeded its full-year forecast for fees of $642,600, with still six months to go, so we do anticipate significant code enforcement fees for the year. Communications or cable franchise fees are 8.27% behind forecast. Cable subscriptions are down this year, and our understanding is that there were some technical loopholes that Charter was attempting to use to reduce those fees. There's been some state legislation that's looking to correct the matter, and we are hoping to make progress on our franchise fee agreement to correct this. Finance fees are 31.21% behind forecast. Lean interest was 4% for the fiscal year 2023 taxes, which is the interest rate that we are collecting on through the first half of 2024. With lean rates higher for fiscal year '24 taxes, this revenue line should bounce back in fiscal year '25. Interest earnings are 9.93% behind forecast. Interest earnings on treasuries do hit semi-annually, and market gains are not booked until the close of the year, so earnings are lagging forecasts a little bit, but we still anticipate hitting our interest target for the year. Planning fees are 14.24% behind forecast. Cost recovery amounts are forwarded to finance late the following month, and prior to printing this report, we hadn't booked them yet. However, I do have the planning fees for December, and we'll be booking them shortly. Public works, primarily excise taxes, 18.71% ahead of forecast. Excise taxes continue to exceed forecasts due to higher prices on new vehicles. The finance department does adopt a conservative approach when forecasting revenues, which is an average of the latest three years, and we simply have not quite caught up to where car prices are today. State assistance is 12.58% ahead of forecast. State revenue sharing remains high, thanks to inflation, which drives state revenues on both an income and price basis, as well as full state revenue sharing. Homestead exemptions have also come in over forecast. Unallocated, 10.93% behind forecast. This is simply a placeholder account for miscellaneous revenues collected throughout the year. Use of fund balance, this is a placeholder account to balance the budget, but no actual revenues are recorded here. Really quickly on grants and reimbursements, the city of Saco has incurred $4,383 in grant-covered expenses and $12,368 in grant revenues in the general fund. The difference is due to $10,000 received from the state for the cost of implementation of LD 2003. That funding was received upfront by the state, and we are working on reallocating related costs to the grant expense account. The city has incurred $1 million in grant-funded expenses in all other funds, and the city has expended $876,071 of ARPA funds to date. Are there any questions on revenues or grants?
Any questions for Director Salas?
Not a question, it's really...
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. A comment, counsel really, for the new members and the city manager, administrator, I keep calling you a manager, you're an administrator. So the Communications Department, years ago, when we added that, I had suggested we tie it to your cable franchise fee, or your cable, yeah, the franchise fees that the city gets from people that have cable. Obviously, people have cut the cord, I guess that's what they call it, pretty regularly now. We've watched that money dip down. So obviously, I think that is, you know, the last couple of years has kind of come front and center, so I anticipate that we'll probably be spending from somewhere else in the future. But what remains outstanding, at least to my knowledge, I don't think we have a contract still, and we've been discussing a contract for 10 years, because I was on that cable franchise, or the cable committee 10 years ago, and we never moved anywhere with it, so I'm just curious for a status update in the future.
Well, I can, we can do a quick one right now. What I'd like to do is, I don't mean to interrupt Director Salas's presentation, but I think it's important that the Human Resource Director, Roy, come forward and maybe just a couple minutes on the cable contract, where we're going. And as she's coming to the table, I've been going over budgets with department heads for the last couple of weeks, and one of the things to recognize is there is still money over and above what communications is for funding, so not all the money that comes in from our contract with cable goes towards communications. But certainly, I'll let Director Roy talk.
So currently, just to answer that budget question, we return about $60,000 of that revenue back to the general fund that isn't used for the communications department operations or for salary lines. So we're using, I think it was about $263,000 is the revenue amount, and so we don't exhaust the entirety of the revenue that we receive for that. In terms of where we're at with negotiations with Charter, we found ourselves in the same place as every other community in Maine who had an expired contract and weren't able to make any progress with them. However, I'm happy to share that we've been exploring different options through consortiums and having Tony Vigiu, who I think you'd be familiar with, who's really a leader in the state in exploring different ways to maximize how communities can benefit from that partnership with Charter. And so the town of Sebago actually was able to make some progress through that partnership with the consortium, and so now we're working with Tony on what was approved by them through that negotiation so that we can mirror some of that. So we're in the final stages of review with our attorney and with Tony in order to issue a letter of transmittal and an updated cable franchise agreement. So once we have that finalized, we'll provide John with an update to share with all of you, so you can have an idea of what that timeline might look like.
Well, thank you. Yep, I think that answers it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just a couple of quick questions. The excise tax, is there any practical way of measuring folks who have expired registr... I just have, I think it's my anal retentive mindset, I got to get a life, I guess. I drive around and I see lots of expired tags, and I'm wondering if there's any way, I know during the pandemic, we eased all the rules, but the rules are back. I just am curious, and I don't have to answer this question tonight, as to whether or not there's any way of capturing how much excise tax we're missing in registration fees, because people are not registering their cars in a timely fashion. So that's just a rhetorical, you know, question that doesn't need to be answered now unless you can enlighten me a little bit. And then I, as we went through LD 2003, I really despise unfunded mandates, and I really feel that that's one of them, but as you can tell. But within LD 2003, there was this, I noticed initially there was this little provision for $10,000 grant, and then I kind of lost sight of it. And then I picked it up again a few weeks ago, and I reached out to City Administrator Bohenko and said, "What about this $10,000?" And sure enough, Emily already applied and received it. So I think it's important for us to know that we got people who are really paying attention to this stuff. And it's only $10,000, it's not a whole heck of a lot of money, but the fact that it was available to us and we went after it is, I think, a good culture, okay, for the citizens and the taxpayers of this city. And so I look at, I look at the registration thing as sort of another component of that. So other than that, if you can address the excise tax, have at it. If you can't, I can wait till later date, it doesn't matter, but thank you for all that effort.
Certainly, I can pass along that question to our tax collector, and I'm sure there's a report she could pull to see. Excess expired licenses are subject to enforcement from the police department, and so there is an enforcement mechanism. But, you know, a month here or there, of course, we have limited resources, and so the police department has to prioritize what enforcement actions are...
I certainly understand that, so...
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that completes the action items. Next item up, item 10 is administrative update. City Administrator Bohenko?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of items that I just wanted to bring to your attention off my written comments. Again, during public comment, there was, you know, a comment relative to last Tuesday where we ended up signing the PPA with the Army Corps of Engineers. One thing I will say, that I did talk to our representative and our project representative, and she apologized for not being here because she had another project that she had to be at, and she came out, she went out of her way to come to City Hall today just to introduce herself. She was hoping to see the mayor, but unfortunately, it was a last-minute thing. So we'll make sure, we'll try to get her here. I did ask her next steps, and I will follow up on that with an email to her tomorrow relative to next steps, which people are interested in. Just to also remind people that this will be the first week that we will have the City Hall hours. They all remain the same from Monday through Thursday, Friday, early closure at 1:00 p.m. I just want to mention, we're trying to do a survey with our customers as well as doing advertisements and posting of the new hours. The other thing I wanted to talk about is budget timeline. I think it's important, counsel, take a look at this, make sure you're all set with some of these dates. The early we know if there's an issue, please let us know. Of course, let the mayor know, and she'll let me know, or you can call me directly or send me an email. Well, obviously, we're going to be pretty busy with budget as typical, and so I just want to make sure I call your attention to those dates. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention that I have my written comments is the work that's being done on the personal property audit. This is an audit, not a revaluation, it's personal property audit. So what we did is, we've hired this firm to come in and do an audit of all personal property within the city. It's important to realize, it is, it's not for the people to comply, it's more for those that may not know enough about the how to comply, and we will bring them up to speed on that. So, and the audit will take about four months. And then just a reminder that this Wednesday, February 7th, at 7:00 p.m., there will be a combined meeting with the city council and the school board. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. On the personal property audit, I'll just say for, again, for the benefit of counsel, I have viewed this for many years as low-hanging fruit. I don't know the last time the city did an audit. I wouldn't be surprised if they've never done an audit. It's really just a self-reporting mechanism that, you know, if you're a business owner, you say X, Y, and Z is there. So there's clearly a benefit there, I would think, to the city. I do have a question, though, and you may not have the answer, it just popped into my mind when I was reviewing this, which is if that personal property is in a TIF district, does those proceeds get diverted into those TIF districts, or do they go to the general fund? It's just, again...
That's a great question.
Question I've had for several years, actually.
Well, that's a great question, because I don't know, so I'll have to check it out, and I'll send an email out to the council.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item 11, council discussion and comment. Any counsel wishing to speak? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Well, for starters, I would like to commend the city administrator. I don't know why you became a manager. All your predecessors have been administrated with me, but for some reason, I consider you a manager.
Well, you know...
Thank you. He's been called worse, probably.
Yeah, exactly. Again, I just, I am appreciative of how attentive you are, as you're probably starting to realize I have a lot of comments and/or questions. But you have been on top of it, as, you know, members of the public have stated, and just wanted to send kudos your way in that regards, because you have been directly on top of it with all my random questions. But with that said, one of the things that has, I've noticed, particularly this year, I don't know if other councils have noticed it, but, and I guess my question is concerning waste hauling and the receptacles or the waste receptacles themselves. I'm curious if that's part of the contract or if the city buys those separately, and reason being is that this particular year, again, I don't know if other councils have seen this, but I've never seen these waste bins treated this way. I mean, I've had many complaints, I myself have had three or four broken, to the point where I'm like hodgepodgeing them together, and yes, I know I could call DPW and get a new waste can, but that's wasteful, huh? Pun intended, in that sense. So I duct tape them together, because it just doesn't make sense to me that we're spending X amount of dollars on a waste can when, from what I've personally seen with my own eyes, it has to do with the behavior of those dumping them and not the waste bins themselves. So throwing that out there, I don't know if it's just in the downtown or if it's other wards, but I definitely have, I mean, I watched a truck straight up put the bin down and then run it over recently, so it just seems wasteful to me, and I'd like to ensure that, you know, they're doing a better job, I guess.
Well, thank you. I will talk to the DPW director and talk to our contractor, and let's see what the observations are from him, and we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other counsel? Okay, not seeing anyone. Next item up, item 12, executive session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, a personnel matter.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Second by Counselor Johnson. We'll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Vermon?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to enter into executive session passes 7-0. We will be meeting in the city administrator's office this evening. We will be meeting in the city administrator's office this evening.
Okay, welcome back. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Motion to exit at 8:42. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. There is no report from executive session tonight. Item number fourteen is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Council Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Council Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes seven zero at eight forty-three. Thank you everyone and have a great evening.